Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, January 30th, at 7:30 PM. The first item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Rosado?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chancet? Wolf? Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien? Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone? And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, let the record reflect, we do have a quorum, and also Alderman and Stark is joining us via telephone. Next item on the agenda is item two, approval of the minutes for January 9th, 2018. Anybody have any comments or questions? No? Somebody care to make a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. Okay, item three, items removed, added or changed. Laura, do we have anything?
No.
No. Item four, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Nobody in the public? Item five, Resolution 18-20-R, Potavia 34 KV rebuild projects, line design proposal for the main substation to Paramount Park substation. We don't have anybody from Public Utilities. Rahad, you got this?
Yes. Thank you, Alderman. So this is, if you want to say, the second phase of the transmission rebuilding project. Last year, if you remember, we did the Fabian Western Transmission. So this one is gonna start at Main Street Substation and go all the way to Paramount Substation. Poles are anywhere between 30 to 50 years old. They need replacement, including all other infrastructure on those poles. We did an assessment back in 2014, and most of these poles were assessed as deficient and they need to be replaced. So this is already included in the five-year CIP plan, and it's been budgeted in this year's budget. So this resolution is just to approve the designer to move ahead and do the design. And also included is the construction inspection. It's beneficial to have the same designer to make sure that they come and visit the construction site and make sure that everything is done, as per the design standard and alignment, everything. So they check out all that. So it's both design and construction inspection for the transmission replacement job.
Anybody have any questions, Rahad?
I got one. Now, I know this says it goes along the ComEd lattice. Will that get separated then from that?
It will stay on ComEd, and then it gets separated.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Uer, second by Rosado, to recommend the city council approval of Resolution 18-20-R approving task order number six for the 34 KV transmission line replacement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
Put that on consent agenda. Thanks. Okay, item number six, Resolution 18-19-R, authorizing the execution of task order number 15 with WBK for Area 3 water main, Phase 2 engineering. Rahad, you got this again?
Okay, so, thank you again. Most of you are aware that we are doing the storm system upgrade in Ward 1, so we are actually upgrading all of them. The storm system there, removing and replacing it with a bigger size storm sewer system. While we are doing that, we will be removing lot of pavement and replacing curb and dig up the street. So we were talking to our water department, and during the discussion, it came out that he, Jeremy, and our water department had quite a bit of water main break over the last few years. The infrastructure is quite old, so it just makes sense that while we dig up the street, we also replace the water main at the same time. That way, we are not digging up the street twice and paying for street repair again and again. So we have talked to WBK, who has the expertise to design water main, and they are doing the CAD work, design work, so it just made sense to get a proposal from them. We evaluated the proposal. The cost is actually lower than typically the cost that we normally see if we would have hired a different consultant, and preparing complete new sets of plans. So there is a cost benefit and cost savings for us doing the design right now, and also for construction, there will be a cost saving when we do the construction, at the same time when we are upgrading the storm system. So this authorizes WBK to go ahead and design the water main, so that we can bid this project out together with the storm system in future.
Thank you. Any questions? Scott?
I'm gonna channel my Michael O'Brien. So you were going from, what is the difference between a Class 50 and a Class 52 pipe?
I have to look at Gary.
Yes, Class 50 is an older class. They, I imagine they probably still manufacture it, but it's a thinner wall of pipe. Class 52 was more heavy duty. So, and it's more modern. I mean, we wouldn't install a Class 50 pipe anymore.
Okay. And then, this is somewhat ambiguous in terms of, we concluded that 59% of the main line was undersized for 10-year storm event. Again, channeling my Alderman O'Brien, we want to upgrade so it has the capability to handle a 10-year storm event. But given the fact that we seem to be having 100-year events now, every year or other, you know, does it make sense to make sure that we can handle those?
So, the cost magnitude of putting a 100-year storm is, it's not only 10 times, it's like way more than that. So it's kind of cost prohibitive in a way. So what we have been trying to do is, we will be accepting that for a bigger event, there will be some water pooling within the street. So it will contain from between the curb line and curb line, so there will be 2, 3 inches of water. Somehow, we'll get to the sag lines and just stay there for a few hours until water can clear out. So we are playing with those, and that's how we are designing the system a little bit. But, again, 100-year, we wish we could do that and take care of it, but it's just too cost prohibitive.
Sure.
The goal is structure protection, not necessarily keeping streets from flooding. So if the street's flooded and you can't get through for half an hour, it's not a big a deal. Somebody's basement gets flooded, that's a big deal.
Well, I'm thinking in specific, specifically there on Larkspur, there is a stretch between Gacy and Chillam that gets hammered with every, and, you know, there's some people there that have split levels, and the water pools up, and then it goes down into their house.
It's the 1960s design that everyone doesn't do anymore because of that reason. But yeah, we're well aware, the lower areas over in Ward 1. Ward 1 has the same issues as Area 3. Yeah, definitely, we're aware, and we won't be ponding water in those areas. There's dust houses over there that have those lower levels, right?
Yeah. And we'll be also collaborating with those homeowners to see whether we could put a bump in their driveway. So, we haven't gone that far, but we'll try to move water and pull it somewhere else. I mean, part of the thing is, now it's not adequately sized, so you're seeing the water. So once we do the 10-year, hopefully, it's not gonna pull there. That's what our model showed, that it's not gonna have any flooding issue on structures.
Right. I did that in Warrenville many years ago, in a lifetime far away. I mean, there was like 12 feet from the back of curb to the front of the sidewalk, 10 foot maybe, I mean, typical parkway. And in that length, you can come up 2 or 3 inches in the center and come back down again, and if you drive over, you never even notice it. But that 2 or 3 inches might buy you just enough to keep the water from flowing out.
Right.
Point of clarification, though, this resolution is for the water main replacement, not, doesn't have anything to do with the storm sewer.
That was a different contract. Yeah.
I do have one more thing on the water main side, if I can.
Yeah.
Sorry. About four years ago, we engaged a consultant to do a rate study, and that consultant had come up with some recommendations. And at that time, we didn't contemplate Area 1 or Ward 1, Area 3 or Ward 1 storm sewer improvements. At that time, we didn't know about the Fabian and Kirk water main improvements. So, kind of, these larger-scale projects weren't known four years ago when that rate study was done. At that time, the consultant had made a recommendation for five years' worth of rate increases, and council had approved only the first three years. So we're in the third year right now. So we're coming to the end of that. So we will be coming back to you this year, now knowing these other projects, which have now subsequently come along. So just to get that all on your radar screen, that we're re-updating the whole capital improvement plan and reevaluating revenue requirements in order to meet these requirements.
Good thing to do. Is this 39,000 in this year's budget?
I believe it was budgeted this year.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
And it's a not-to-exceed amount, so if they don't spend, we keep the money. But if they go over, they get 39,000.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Serone, second by, no, Meitzler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Go to consent agenda on that too. Rahad, thank you. Okay, next item is item seven, the discussion on the solid waste contract. Laura, are you gonna start us out with that, or Gary?
Actually, Gary's got this one.
Okay.
I don't have a memo. It just really is more of a verbal update from where we left off, because if you recall, in the fall, we came to you saying that we were gonna be meeting with Geneva and St. Charles. All of us were kind of on the cycle of coming to the end of our solid waste contracts. And at that point in time, we had been talking with them just about what we wanted to do going forward. And we actually came to you and said that Advanced Disposal had been in some contact with us back then, and that they had expressed an interest to renew their contract in order to keep going forward with us. And the direction from council at that time was for staff to engage with Advanced and to get a proposal from Advanced, and to see what we thought of that proposal before kind of taking any further steps. So, all three communities received similar guidance from their relative councils, and so all three communities subsequently met with Advanced and got formal proposals from Advanced going forward. So, that being said, after receiving those proposals, all three communities are of the opinion that the scope change is so significant that we really need to be going out for bid, because we're kind of changing, kind of changing the rulebook, so to speak. And the other two communities actually had input from their purchasing folks, and one even from their legal, which advised them, you know, to go out for competitive bidding process. So, the three of us met again, us three communities did, at the staff level, and that was the ultimate direction that we said, is that it's probably in our best interest to act together. Again, that can be a decision you guys make if you don't choose to do that. But by acting together, we can do one common set of documents, just like we did last time. We can bid it all out at the same time. One holler can coordinate collection amongst the three communities. It gives us the opportunities for economies of scale by all working together. But by doing that, we all have to kind of take the same course of action. So, the three of us feel that it's, we are actually now taking steps to work on contract documents. If you recall, the last time we did it with Geneva, not with St. Charles, St. Charles at that time had a different situation. So we already have all the boilerplate, it's really kind of all in place. And all three communities now are reviewing that boilerplate and updating it as necessary, and we're all gonna insert our own individual requirements, and we will come back to you with regards to that. But right now, the proposal we received from Advanced was very favorable, and would suggest that possibly going to a totter program could be economically viable. Some of the concerns that we've had was that a totter program penalizes those people that don't use a lot of garbage. Sometimes, you know, the people who maybe toss out the half-bag today. And they had come up with some options, and we'll incorporate those options into the bid documents, that will allow those people who use just a half-bag to still have a totter and still make it work for them economically. So, we're gonna come up with a couple of different options, and certainly discuss those with you. But the idea of bidding out a totter program, a complete totter program for both garbage and recycling, is definitely gonna be one of the options we put out there, as well as the continuation of the sticker program, where you only have a recycling totter. So, all three communities are working on that now, kind of coming up with the various things, and we'll come back to you in discussing more of the options. But I wanted to at least bring you up to speed where we were. At this point in time, we're investigating and getting plans in place, so that we're gonna be going out for bid here in the spring for new contract come summertime, so.
Okay. I know we don't have a memo. So what would be the, what was the significant change in the advanced proposal to us?
So last time, we bid out a sticker program, and that was the primary program. We asked for totter pricing, but the program wasn't around having totters. It was, give us a sticker program, that was the desire of city council, and just kind of for our knowledge, give us pricing on totters. This time, it's going to be, give us a totter program and give us pricing on stickers. So kind of, if you will, the shift of the focus.
Okay.
Dave?
Mayor?
Gary, do we have any idea, if we change this to a toting program with no stickers, what that would cost everybody in a month? Would we put it on their utility bill? Is that what we envision we would do?
So, yes. And based on just the one proposal we've received so far, the cost indications are, and from what other communities are experiencing, is that we could switch to a total program and still have it cost less for everyone, so.
I mean, the one issue I can see here is, is that I know there are some older senior citizen residents who have talked to me, that they're kind of scared to death of pushing those big, I'll call it garbage cans out to the street on wheels.
Yep.
Some of the older ladies claim that they can't really handle them, they're too heavy, they fall over on them, et cetera, et cetera. And they like the idea when we add a sticker, because most of them don't generate that much garbage in a 2- or 3-week period, that they need, they have a great big toting device that they take out. So, I think we, you know, whatever strategy we want to unfold here, we probably will catch some pushback from some residents about this.
So the haulers can provide three different-sized totters, a small, medium, and a large. And what is available, that maybe most people may not know, is that we can make it a requirement of our contract, so that if there is someone who is not physically capable to get the totter out to the street, that that can be a requirement of the holler to have that person place that totter just outside their garage door, and they will haul it to the street, they'll empty it, and they'll place it back at their garage door again. So, that way, their house is secure, they don't have to keep the garage door up, but they also don't have to make the trek out to the curb with the totter. So that's something that came up during our discussions, and that will be a requirement in our contract.
Would that eliminate the stickers altogether, then?
If we end up with a totter program, you go to, well, not necessarily. There's two different ways of approaching it. Okay, I live in Las Vegas, where we have a totter program, I can put anything I want to in my totter, and if it doesn't fit in the totter, I can put anything I want to out of the curb. I don't have to, I'm not limited by my totter. In order to get the most economical program, and recognizing that 95% of the time, if people could choose a small, medium, or a large totter, they probably could fit whatever they need to inside that totter each month. Okay, so, you will have some times when you have a party and need an extra bag or two, that might be an instance where we stick with sticker. And you bring out your totter, and, oh, I had a party this weekend, so I need a couple extra stickers for my bags. That's the most economical approach, because then it's a pay-as-you-go, and you're not paying extra for somebody else who's throwing out a bunch of stuff every week.
Well, I know, because I've, you know, had them take, you know, haul things away. You call them ahead of time, you put a sticker on a couch, and they'll take it away, so long as you call them ahead of time, so.
Yeah. So those types of programs will still exist. So there'll still be stickers, even though probably most people won't ever use stickers.
Gary, have you talked to them about, this last fall, I think we briefly touched on how they, with the current contract, they pick up the leaves for free, as long as they're in a bag in December?
December, yeah.
And we thought, maybe, maybe we should try to get that in November also, because as weather approaches and you have to switch over to snow, maybe the leaves aren't all getting picked up, and it gives the residents that opportunity still?
We certainly can add that as an option.
Okay.
All three communities have said that the leaves in December is a good thing. St. Charles doesn't offer that currently. They want to offer that, so.
Mark?
Make sure we're checking to see what the impact is utility billing, because if we have three different tote sizes, then somebody's gotta keep track of how we're putting it on those utility bills, and what's the extra effort from us going to be for that.
And again, once you get your totter, it's not like you're changing every week. So once you-
No, I understand that, but-
Once you get in the system, it's just, so it's an initial data dump into the system to say, you have a 65 gallon, you have a 30 gallon, you have a 95 gallon, and it gets on your account. And then, generally speaking, that's the heavy lifting. After it's on your account, you're probably gonna stick with the same totter for the next four years, until the new contract comes up. You probably aren't gonna switch out totters, you know, size-wise. You do occasionally, I'm sure there are people who say-
That's what I'm saying, I mean, just occasionally.
You know, hey, we now have a new baby, and this 35 is no longer cutting it, so yeah.
One other thing I'd like to interject in my conversation is, I think that this council, specifically, if we're gonna partner up with our neighbors, we have to have some understanding of what impacts that will or will not have on our waste transfer station.
Right.
Because the waste transfer station is a revenue generator for the citizens of Potavia, among other things. And if we went in a different direction somehow, I could see where that could be significantly impacted.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to see our tipping fee drop out there, because, you know-
We are obligated to bring our waste to the waste transfer station. Historically, Geneva and St. Charles hadn't had their waste coming to our waste transfer station. Under the contract we're in now, Geneva ended up coming to our waste transfer station, because that was the way the contract came in. I don't know if St. Charles does today or not. I think they do, because it's advanced. So, I mean, I think St. Charles comes to our transfer station already.
So if a different, if a competing garbage disposal company were to get this contract, they still have to take it to our waste transfer station?
Our community.
Our community?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. They would not bear contractual obligation to bring Geneva or St. Charles here. But, again, it all depends how their operations work. Seemingly, you would bring it all to the same spot, it would be the most efficient way to handle it. But I'm not a waste toller, so I don't know the answer to that.
How would we monitor that? How would we know that every truckload that gets picked up in our town actually goes there, or would they take a few truckloads that way at the end of the day?
I don't know how you, good question. They're under a legal contract to do it. So, I mean, I don't know why they would want to mess around and trying to do something different.
To save money.
Yeah.
And then, I'm understanding that we're-
We don't monitor them today. I mean, I don't think we've ever monitored.
Right. Maybe we should. Have somebody follow them around at the end of the day. What are you doing tomorrow, Gary? But, so, it would be paid for through our utility billing, so the risk is on us to collect the money. And then, I mean, we're gonna have to pay the, we're gonna have to pay the garbage company whether we actually get paid or not?
Well, again, I, as far as the model of billing goes, whether the garbage company invoices directly or goes through utility billing, I'm always used to utility billing. That's where it's always been, but, I mean, that's-
I know a lot of communities like that, yeah.
And, again, we have, well, we have the same leverage we have with any of other accounts, be it water, sewer, electric. I mean, we have the leverage of non-payment.
Right.
And it's generally a pretty effective leverage when the lights go off, so.
And I would think that that should be reflected when they bid on the contract, too, if it's cheaper for, I mean, if they're guaranteed, they're gonna get paid. That's-
Yes.
Nick?
No, I just had a question. How is that a revenue for us, the waste station? How does that work?
Every ton of garbage that gets to Gary can explain it better.
No, no, you're on the right track.
Every ton of garbage that goes in there, we get, what is it, $3.80?
Yeah.
$3.80 a ton for every ton of garbage that goes into that waste transfer station.
I don't have a total revenue number, though.
I don't even-
I don't either, but it's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It's a lot of money.
Oh, yeah, it's, what, it's, how many ton a year is, they're permitted to only bring in so much a year. And that got raised once since they've been here. I can't remember how much it is.
I don't remember our revenue either, but it's a couple, it's in the six figures.
Yeah.
It's all, solid revenue.
It's like 350, maybe more.
The operating, the owner of the waste transfer station, when they charge, let's say, Joe goes in there and dumps off some garbage, 10 tons, he then gets charged for his 10 ton, let's say it's $30 a ton. Well, out of that $30 a ton, then $3.80 a ton gets paid back to the city of Potavia. It was a great revenue source. It is a great revenue source, and that's one of the reasons why we went along with it. And when we did it, there was a committee that the mayor set up of citizens to work with, who was it at that time, mayor? Was it Onyx?
Waste Management, right?
It was Waste Management at that time, to work on the language for this, and it's been a-
It's a long time ago, it was very controversial. We had several meetings, daytime meetings, and everything else, and we had people here screaming at us the whole time that it was gonna be the ruination, the smell was gonna be bad.
Yep.
It was gonna drop property values on the east side. There was gonna be litter scattered all up and down Kirk Road. Everything that they said never happened, but we certainly heard it all.
Well, I think a lot of the reason why it hasn't happened is because through that committee and through the city council, we put into that contract with them of what they had to do, and that they have to, they have to monitor Kirk Road. I think two times a day, they have to go up and down Kirk Road and clean garbage up on Kirk Road. And they've always honored that agreement.
Very responsible about it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that, there's probably a lot of people in town who don't even realize they have a transfer station.
Right.
So that's the price of hosting it here and pay the community. Okay, I just wasn't getting it, okay.
But it would be interesting, Gary, if you get it, you know, look up what that revenue or that tonnage is and send it out to us as a refresh.
I'm ready, and I'm getting nothing.
Okay, Marty?
Yeah, Gary, St. Charles used to have the, kind of the all-spring cleanup day, and I think, used to be in Potavia, maybe years ago. I get asked about that every once in a while. I don't know if St. Charles still does that, or not, or if they were-
I think they do. I think they've mentioned that they still do that.
Do you know if that was one of the options? Because I-
We can make it an option, just a bid option.
I get a lot of people like, would like that opportunity, or liked when we used to have that as a-
I came from a community that had it.
I know it's gonna cost.
Yeah, it's a cost.
It's gonna cost, but I think it's one of those ones that people could understand, that they're not having to hire a bagster or a dumpster, and-
The hard part of that is it's a cost that would be added to your cart fee.
Right.
And so you'll pay for it, even though you may not use it. That's the hard part about that one. That's why going with the extra stickers is a little more of an equitable user fee. Because if someone wants to put out 20 bags one week, they have to buy 19 stickers and a cart, and you don't have to pay for that, they do.
Right. I think that program, when we dropped that, it was, that spring cleanup was done by the city of Potavia employees.
Yeah, we didn't do it.
Our end loader and our trucks went out and picked everything all up, and-
I'll veto that.
As we, yeah. As we got into money crunches, that was one area that we saw that we could, should, get rid of.
Yeah, I have been in community, I've lived in communities where we had amnesty the day with no stickers, and, yeah, you could just put stuff out. It was great when you were moving, because you got to clean out your whole basement and put out the curb. But it does, this is a program that's funded by everyone.
To answer the question about the revenue from the waste transfer station, it is, the 2018 budget estimate is $528,000.
Wow, that's a lot of garbage.
Can we open one of the samples?
The more garbage, the better.
Gary said it smells so bad.
Okay. Any more questions for Gary?
We will keep you updated.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Item eight, project status. Laura?
Yes, so, community and economic development, we're continuing to review the Windmill Manor and the Prairie Commons submittals. And also, just wanted to put a reminder out there that the campaign is on the agenda for the city council meeting that is on Monday, February 5th. There was some confusion about whether it was on, the city council meeting on Monday, February 5th, or at the committee of the whole meeting Tuesday, February 6th. But it is, in fact, on Monday, February 5th. Gary has already mentioned that both the water and the electric utilities are working on updating their five-year CIP programs to reflect changes that are resulting from the need to perform infrastructure improvements associated with the Ward 1 and Area 3 drainage projects. And so, we'll be presenting with updated CIPs, along with future rate projections to city council at an upcoming meeting. This past weekend, people noticed a smell in our downtown. And while it was thought that that was something that was emanating from the wastewater treatment plant, one of our employees of the wastewater treatment plant actually took it upon himself to investigate that this weekend, and it was actually coming from a sewer grate that was here on Houston Street. And it was a smell of a different nature than is occurring as a result of the construction project that's happening at the wastewater treatment facility. It was just something that was resulting from the warmer weather that we experienced, and, you know, something kind of coagulated in that particular area. and, you know, the, something kind of coagulated in that particular area of our system. So, it's something that should be a rare occurrence. It's not the first time that it ever happened, but my understanding is it hasn't happened in a number of years. So, I just want to make sure that people know it's not something that they should expect to smell on a regular basis as a, you know, with the wastewater treatment plants. Also, wanted to let you know that staff did have a conversation with people in the real estate department from Walmart. And we, it was nice to have the opportunity to speak directly with them so that we could distinguish our Batavia property from the 62 others that they are currently marketing. They explained to us that they have a few other retail operations who, when they are closing a number of stores at the same time, they'll go to these other retailers and find out if they might be interested in a bulk sale of several of the properties that will be closing. And they say they usually can complete that type of contact and get a response within a couple of weeks. If there are no takers, then, of course, the property will be sold through a broker. But we made sure to tell them, you know, all of the positives about this particular site that should make it more marketable perhaps than some others. Also, while we were on the call, we asked about the gas station. And they said that this was a gas station that you could use both your Walmart card and your Sam's Club card at. So, they were very hopeful that that gas station was going to remain open. But, Mayor, you had a subsequent, can you use your microphone?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to talk with the manager at the Walmart store today. And he informed me that he had been contacted by Walmart and was proceeding to fill out the paperwork of transferring the station from Sam's Club to Walmart. And that the hope is to have it back in total operation by sometime in the latter part of February. And there's a few issues there, because, you know, when you bought gas there previously, you had to use a Sam's Club card to get in there, or I guess you could use a credit card. When you get into, you know, Walmart's selling gas, I think there's a probability that there could be people wanting to give them cash. So, they have to kind of maybe change things around a little bit in that little building they have in the middle of the area there so that they can deal with a variety of situations that may occur as far as buying it. But that is a very, very heavily-used gas station. There's good sales there. So, we certainly didn't want to lose that in addition to everything else we lost in the deal. Walmart, I guess I would describe, was cooperative about it and was, I don't know if I think they knew really what they had, but they quickly learned.
And lastly, we have had a few more inquiries to the Public Works Department on that indoor farming operation. So, we remain in competition for that, although they haven't made any final decision yet. But it's good to still be in the running. And that's all I have, unless anyone has questions for me? Yes?
There was a fabulous article in the paper today about Campana. Is that all, everything we know that they're not submitting? There's nothing, something strange we should expect on Monday? It's,
I don't know what to tell you to expect on Monday, frankly. The ball is really in their court.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, we should know by Friday, right?
Right.
What the actual, what we're voting on.
Yes. Yes, exactly. Yeah, when the agenda is published, it will have what you're voting on.
Anybody else? Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Item 9, others. Anybody have another?
I just had a question regarding the FOIA one that came in. It's going to that info box, just so that we know. How is that being monitored so that it doesn't get missed? Because obviously, that's a, has some serious legal ramifications.
Absolutely. So, anything that comes in that is a police request is routed to police and Chris Kudworth as our FOIA officer. That info at is for general inquiries and that goes to both Chris and me.
Okay. Because I think the way, the way it was taken by the gentleman who did put it in, that that was the way to request FOIA?
And ordinarily, Chris would be the one to respond to it. This one had to be handled differently, because it was about his communications.
Thank you.
Anybody else? How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Solvati, second by Malley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried.